That's what my wife was calling all her teachers and students, right? They still make it to the day. That was a great one. That's what my wife was calling all her teachers and students, right? They would send me a report and they'd still make it to the day.
Yeah.
Seven hundred and fifty. Let Mike celebrate his birthday. Let Mike celebrate his birthday. Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission. It is Monday, April tenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I would like to be glad of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Dennis.
Here.
Weeden.
Here.
Bianski.
Yep.
Money.
Present.
Clem.
Present.
We have a forum.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you.
Should we say okay for him and this and that?
I tell him I can put on the next one. It's a sign. We'll do it officially at the next one. Can we have a roll call, please?
Weeden.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yep.
Money.
Yes.
Clem.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Caris.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment on agenda items only. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the minutes. Anyone wishing to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Someone like to make a motion?
I'll also move.
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Clem.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Weeden.
Yes.
Caris.
Thank you. Moving now to scheduled matters from the floor. Uh, we don't have any. So, reports by departments, committees, and boards, starting with their community development director, Mr. Richard Murphy.
Thanks, Mayor. Commissioners, members of the public, Rich Murphy, Community Development Director. Uh, two items to report on. Um, the first is the Ross Sanders project, uh, moving forward on all fronts. As you're aware, we have the RFP draft that you approved, subject to revisions by the attorney and my department. Uh, on a parallel track, I have, uh, all the title work back on the parcels involved in, um, the, uh, adjacent to the project, including the Ross Sanders parcel. All that title work has come back. Prine and Newhoff has pulled all that title work and they have reviewed it. Additionally, they've provided us with an estimate for moving forward on all the survey work that would be required to survey the existing parcels and then redraw the new Ross Sanders parcel, taking into account the access for the fire department and, uh, future use of the Ross Sanders building and public parking. So, uh, I think you're aware that throughout this process, I've kept Chief Adams, uh, involved, up to speed on every, uh, update, uh, so that he feels comfortable and, uh, he's up to date on the, the latest concept we have to redraw the, the new Ross Sanders parcel. Um, the same team from Prine and Newhoff has given us a estimate of sixty-five hundred dollars to move forward. Um, just so you know, I, this is good news, uh, for this, uh, estimate, I believe, I, because I've engaged an already mobilized survey team that's out here doing work all the time and has been doing work for the streetscape project. So they're keenly familiar with these parcels. Uh, additionally, they pulled all the title work for me and, uh, they, I've had several hours of conversation with them about the objective and looking at the property lines. They will be out, if you approve this, they will be out for a field visit. Uh, we'll go walk the property, begin to understand where they can, uh, draw the lines and, uh, then they'll begin, uh, to propose new lines. Um, once they have that done, I will work with, uh, the city assessor to have the combination of land split, uh, and, uh, Prine and Newhoff will ensure that everything's done correctly and the documents will be recorded, which will then allow us to bring the RFP forward with the new Ross Sanders parcel.
Is there a timeline on this?
Three weeks, they said, ten days ago. So, uh, you know, I'm hoping some, I have an update in the next couple of weeks.
And the only other thing I really want to ask is, is this the best price we could have got, Rich? Did you talk to any other surveyors or?
I, I believe it's vastly the best price because I'm engaging a team that's already here, um, instead of bringing up a, a team cold, having to get on their schedule, having them to mobilize Buchanan. Um, additionally, Mike Schwartz from Prine and Newhoff has asked his team to prioritize this for us because of our relationship on the street state skate project. So I believe it's a very good price and with my experience.
Yeah, I thought it was a pretty fair price as well. I have got a couple of projects going where it's multiple surveys, piece it together, remainder descriptions need to be updated. Thought it was a fair price, especially with the title work included there.
Any other questions?
So Patrick, the pricing has gone up exponentially.
Oh, yeah, it's crazy. It's nuts.
Thank you.
I mean, we could have our, our city attorneys do the, the title work and we're going to spend thousands, right? So.
Yeah, we're fine.
I think having people know what they're doing is a good idea.
They're doing three, at least three surveys in one there.
Right. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the proposal from Prine Newhoff for the Ross Sanders project in the amount of sixty-five hundred dollars.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Money.
Yes.
Clem.
Yes.
Madison.
Yes.
Weeden.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Caris.
Okay, second item, update on the demolition of one eleven railroad of the Rota Tire Two. Uh, you'll remember that you approved the engagement with Point Blue, um, to move forward and develop the demo specifications for this, uh, property. We had our kickoff meeting, we walked the property with the consultants. Uh, they've been busy for the last several we- weeks developing the specifications for demolition. Um, there are a few moving parts and so I did ask, uh, Mark and Shay from Point Blue, uh, to be here this evening to walk you through, uh, those moving parts and also establish the timeline for releasing the bid and getting, uh, the project lined up. Uh, on a parallel track, I am, uh, tracking a, uh, two hundred thousand dollar grant on the county, uh, from our county land bank that is a blight grant and I'm asking for the Buchanan project, which I believe to be a very, uh, project with a lot of economic, potential economic impact to be prioritized. So, uh, we are moving and on the radar for that grant. So, uh, with that, uh, I can turn it over to Point Blue to give their presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. Shay Muller, uh, senior engineer with Point Blue in St. Joseph. Uh, like Rich has said, uh, we've prepared plans and specifications for the demolition of the old feed mill as well as the Rota Tire Center two, uh, building. Uh, those plans and specifications are, are complete and we're wrapping up some loose ends, but, uh, they should be ready for, um, putting out for advertisement, uh, on this Friday, April fourteenth. Um, I'll just go through the timeline. So, uh, advertise on the fourteenth. Two weeks later, we'll have a mandatory pre-bid meeting, uh, at the site. Um, and then there's going to be, uh, questions. The deadline to submit questions to me will be May third. Bid opening is scheduled at this time, uh, May tenth. Uh, notice of award, May fifteenth. Okay, here's where the fun part comes. Okay, so, uh, a significant factor in the scheduling of the project is our relationship, uh, with Amtrak. And speaking with Amtrak, the location of the building and the location of the work is going to require us to get a, a permit to enter, a PTE permit from Amtrak. And that is going to draw things out. So, the way we're going to approach it is the winning bidder is going to have to prove that, you know, they know how to put something together for Amtrak that's going to be acceptable. Um, their crane pick plan is going to be at the sign, going to have to be signed off by a structural engineer familiar with that type of work. Um, that's not our bailiwick. So the bonus is going to be put on the contractor, uh, to have an acceptable plan put together and submitted to Amtrak. Uh, our understanding in talking with Amtrak, it's going to be about a three-month process for getting, uh, approv- approval from, final approval from them, assuming there's no huge hurdles, which I can't expect there to be, but, um, so that being said, um, at, at this time, I'm, I'm not going to guesstimate when they're going to have that permit. Um, but going to give the contractor ninety days for substantial completion from the issuance of the notice to proceed, which, uh, notice to proceed won't be given until that plan, uh, the approvals from Amtrak is in hand, uh, with a hundred calendar days, uh, after the notice to proceed for final completion. So I guess that's, that's all I really have. Uh, field of questions, if you'd like?
I'm curious, what, what's plan B if you, if no one responds that has experience working with Amtrak?
Um, well, that's, my understanding, that's not going to happen if we don't get Amtrak's buy-in. Um, oh, if nobody has experience?
Yeah, I, I, I have a feeling that we're not going to find many, um, contractors who are familiar with permitting.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to be reaching out to a few that I have, some larger firms that I have, uh, familiarity with and experience. Um, and I, I guess I'd have to imagine that they'd have some experience along the railroad.
I know some demolition experts that could probably do the work at three o'clock in the morning.
I know, I've already got contacts for somebody who knows how to handle that. They're already aware, it's twenty-five feet from the center of the tracks, so they're aware of the process. So, when they, when this RFP goes out, we'll make sure that gets to them. Does, uh, Amtrak have a list of preferred contractors that we can lean on potentially do?
I will reach out.
Now, do we have a preliminary budget?
The budget I gave Rich was in, in the range of two hundred thousand.
Okay.
Is it just the downspout off of that one that Amtrak is having such a fit about? And the other ones have been complaining? I mean, there's just one overspout that goes out over the track.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I thought we might be able to get by without it. I, I, we've reached back out with, you know, our plans. I mean, we don't have a pick plan yet, but, um, that they are of the position that this permit is going to be required.
I mean, I understand the people, how can they want to know that we're going to be working there? I kind of understand that, but ninety days, you know, holy crap. You know, I know there's nothing we can do about it, bureaucratic BS, but holy crap. Yeah, we're looking at next year.
No, we're hoping for, we're hoping for early, early fall, uh, start as far as demolition.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah.
If, if.
If it all falls into place.
True, true.
Yeah.
Well, I know the one gentleman that wanted to buy it that was going to help the city, you know, substantially as far as the money, that's getting pretty far out for what he wants for the project he wants, you know, and the fact that we're moving along as well as we are. Amtrak is really the ones that pushed us into this and now they put a, a bridge up in front of us and they charge us rent. It's, just for the public's knowledge, they charge us rent to go across their tracks. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I think that's all we have.
Thanks, Shay.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the main street manager, uh, Ms. Ashley Regan. Where's our RT guy?
If it doesn't show up, I'll just turn the.
It's rich.
Oh, there's something on there, yeah.
Hi, I'm Ashley. You guys know me and I also have, um, several members of my board taking up the back row here and then Randy's there. So, we're here to ask you for five thousand dollars in startup funds for our group, Live Buchanan, to begin what we can't do without money. There are other avenues we're seeking with money. We have grants and partnerships that are in the works, but there's a couple of things we need to get moving on now in order to be effective, um, including the majority of the money going towards, uh, this project that you see on the screen behind you. This is just a, a visual representation of what we think it might look like. This is the old hometown video store now owned by Roland Property Group as it is about a week ago and what we imagine it can be. Uh, to explain it a little further, this is what I'm calling a business incubator. You could call it a business accelerator. There's a small difference between the two, but what we want to do is host up and coming startup businesses, um, for a small fee in our space and hopefully help them grow and flourish here in Buchanan, find a customer base here in Buchanan, find an audience here in Buchanan, um, and ultimately find a permanent space here in Buchanan, fill our downtown buildings, fill our surrounding buildings and fill our community with thriving businesses. I've spoken to you before on this, but the success rate of a business that starts or is hosted in a business incubator is about eighty percent versus forty percent if they go it alone. Um, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback going around the community, talking about this, and we have a lot of interested people. However, to move forward, there are some just basic business expenses we need to start making in order for this to be ready to go. Hopefully, our projected start date is in August. Um, so we need to start signing lease agreements. We need to start getting our applications out. We'd love to have print versions of our applications. We'd love to have flyers. Um, we'd love to boost ads and target audiences and all of that costs money. So I think we have a pretty modest ask here for what we're going after and I'm seeking a lot of grants, um, to get this project going because as you can tell, this isn't a five thousand dollar project. Um, it's going to take a lot of time and work and money. So I'm hoping you'll help us get started and give us a little boost so that we can move forward and do the best we can for Buchanan. Thank you.
This is inside Michael Rowland's building?
This is just a rendering of it, but yes, this is where the old hometown video store used to be. So I'll show you. Um, that's, that glass there is facing the library, facing days. That's inside where he's at now with construction or where they are at now with construction. And I've been meeting with, uh, the Roland Property Group, uh, fairly regularly and they're excited to be partners with us and to help us get this off the ground.
What are they using their building for?
Well, no, they're going to white box it in, so it'll be a space that should this project move on, they can use for other purposes. What we want to do is the, um, the furnishings in there and bring in businesses to host there. So it's like a booth setup that we would do, but they would be finishing the building, just to clarify that. I, that is a distinction.
Is that going to be like a pop-up business?
Yeah, very similar, yeah.
Okay.
The difference between just hosting a pop-up business, um, and a business incubator is the, I would call it almost like a program that you enter where you have, um, assistance from our experts. We have a bunch of entrepreneurial experts here in our town. Um, we're talking with Cornerstone Alliance to help bring in their resources as well. So they get a lot of, these businesses get a lot of included feedback, resources, help, connections, um, that will, that's part of why a business incubator is so helpful. It's not just cheap rent. It's a system of individuals that know more than you do because they've been in the field for a long time and can help guide you to be successful. Um, and then again, the goal is to get these successful businesses placed in Buchanan long-term, um, or to have them not take on a l- huge expense and then not succeed. Help them start off and learn without having a huge loss. Um, so there's a lot of different benefits from having a business incubator.
So is, is the ask today more related to the marketing needs of the organization? We're not doing, we're not paying for a build out with this ask or anything? It's just marketing, sponsorship, print?
Okay.
Yeah, it's more for just those initial things that we just, if we are not moving on them now, it's just postponing everything. Um, I do have, like I said, some grants out there and I'm hopeful that those will help carry the major costs of this. Um, but this is to make sure that we have vendors in the space. It's also to inform people of what's going on, but the bulk is going towards the business incubator.
Randy, I see he's in the audience. He's got a massive building. Why don't they do this on their own? We're doing this already in the farmer's market for all intents and purposes. This is welfare. This is welfare. We're building this building out. We're, we're, we're marketing a single building. We're not marketing the city. They do this at the colleges. I mean, and they have very little turnout and if you're really wanting to get into business, this is, no, I, no, I'm sorry, no. I, I didn't even realize it was his.
To clarify one point, we're not building out the building, so they would give us, the walls would be finished, the ceiling would be finished. It just wouldn't have the furnishings just so.
But you're paying rent to a private enterprise. You will be paying rent. So you are, you will be.
Okay, I understand.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm just curious, is this similar to what we see in St. Joe, uh, that they've had multiple businesses inside, similar to like a year-round flea market? I guess you could say it's more, obviously it's much more grand than a flea market, but, uh, obviously those business entities within each one of those spaces pays substantially less rent because of their multitude of businesses that encompass that space, right? And if anybody's been to St. Joe and, and viewed that property, right, it's exceptional. I mean, it's absolutely exceptional and, and I realize there's not been much rotation of businesses within that incubator, uh, but the businesses that have arrived in that property, uh, are doing extremely well. And I, I don't know, there's one person that could go there and say that that would be something that would be extremely helpful in our setting, right, to, to give people a jumpstart into, uh, visibility on their product and also with a low rent overhead cost. Uh, and we have properties that we want to fill in Buchanan and this would be something that they could prove their business model to the individuals such as Patrick who are in commercial lending, you know, to give them an opportunity and to help to, to build their brand, right? It's something that they're building out in Colorado. It's something that they do in California. This is not a new concept. Uh, it seems like a head. It seems like a heavy lift, but I think just to get the idea out there on the market and to use your presence and use Main Street's capabilities with the board members that sit there, you know, this wouldn't have been brought to the community and to the commission if there wasn't a strong presence within the group to believe this is something that would function well within our community.
Is this similar to what they do in South Haven?
Do you mean the house, the houses that?
Yeah.
There are some similarities between this project with the houses that you're mentioning and the market. The distinction I would make is that this, like I said, is more of a program where we're hoping for these businesses to have this as a launching pad into our community long-term versus this being their final resting place. But as far as helping a small business with a lower cost setup to get well-known in a community, to have a place to start their business, yes, that is exactly the same.
Right, so think of it, Muskegon has a similar thing, and then what this does, in addition to giving visibility to that brand, it is, it then gives them a platform for Ashley to say, here's the people in a small business organization setting. It gives them an opportunity to meet with bankers and have those handshakes and, and conversations that maybe otherwise wouldn't have been presented to them if they were trying to do this from the farmer's market perspective, right? We're all familiar with that business model. And what that leads to, and traditionally it doesn't lead to a, a long-term opportunity for business owners that have a substantial product that they believe will help everybody in the community.
And I'd like to also say, this is not a novel, new, experimental business. This is done everywhere, and I would encourage you to look it up if you haven't and see for yourself, just in Chicago within, I think, yeah, just in Chicago, not even in Illinois. There's, I think, four or five. Obviously, they have a different market, I'm not saying we're the same, but it's not a new unheard-of idea, and I encourage you to look for yourself and see that these are effective, that there's a reason that there are so many right now. They help communities, they help small business, they help create jobs in our town. They're important for growth, especially with a small community like ours that needs that competitive advantage to start off, especially with people that might not have the collateral to take out a huge loan and start off that way, but can start small and build. And yes, we do want to bring in investors and have investor days, and I've already spoken to people who are like, oh, this would be great, I need a pastry chef, I would definitely come down and see what you have.
I was making signs for a business in South Bend that had restaurants, multiple restaurants inside, and the restaurants were so successful that the names kept changing. They finally just said, you know what, quit making those signs because we can't keep the people long enough, they're moving out and starting, and opening their own restaurants. So, I know it works. I think it's a great idea. I think it'll bring, it gives people something to do. I keep hearing that there's nothing to do when you get here, so it's, you know, it'd be a nice place to, to shop. So, I would make the motion to approve the five thousand dollars in startup funds for Live Buchanan, Main Street program.
I'll support.
I want to, I, I've got some points to bring up first. The city of Buchanan has been removing this kind of stuff for ever, and, you know, I mean, it's all fine and dandy to lend a helping hand to somebody, but if you don't have the initiative to get out and go into business for yourself, you're probably not going to succeed anyhow. Because if somebody has to hold your hand, and you can, you can shake your head and disagree with me on this, but, you know, if, I just don't see this working as far as revenue building for the city of Buchanan, and that's, that's what we really need to go after. We need a strong tax base, and mom and pops, you know, are really a thing of the past for all intents and purposes. For one thing, most people have really big dreams, they have no money, and if they do have enough money, they don't have enough energy to work the businesses that they do have, so...
But you're looking at the egg, and we're looking at the chicken. And if we're, we're waiting for the businesses to be successful so they can open a shop.
You know, if we take this logic, right?
We ain't got time to wait for squat.
If we take this logic, right, and we look at it from that perspective, then we would say, okay, let's take, for instance, everybody has an animal, a dog specifically, takes it to this wonderful place called Blue Paw, right, who has at a point now where they can no longer take dogs, right? Wouldn't it be a great opportunity, as much as Randy may not want them to ever move out? If we see something with substantial market share in the dog grooming business and they grow into a four or five people opportunity that started in what we would consider an incubator in Randy's building, right? I mean, that's essentially what we're talking about here. So, if we see it from the perspective that somebody who doesn't have the grandiose opportunity to buy the building itself and renovate it and have this one entity, then what good are we to support small businesses? Because we want them to grow.
Can I add to your comment? Okay, all right. Since my name keeps coming up, I figured I might just add to the, to the discussion. Randy Henderson, Building 324 owner, for those that don't know me. I, I want to back up a little bit and talk about Main Street program, but that's not why we're here. So, I won't get on that unless you guys decide you want to have that conversation. Thank you, Ashley, for putting this all together, bringing it here tonight, because this is just a small little drop in the bucket of what this really awesome, active group is doing in the community. So, I think that we're here to give you guys a, a little, like, drop of a, like, just a glimpse into what we're doing, but in the grand scheme of things, we need startup money, right? And so, we, we're asking you guys to trust us, okay? I'm part of this group because I believe in it, and you guys know a little bit about the building that you keep bringing up, and currently we have thirty-one businesses in seventy thousand square foot building. We have a waiting list of about eighteen right now, okay? Every time I get an inquiry, I think I can shift them this direction. The model works, you know, Commissioner Vigansky, you have a lot of skepticism in this, and I, I totally appreciate that because that's, that's going to help us do a little bit of a break check, a little pulse on this, you know? But what I can tell you is that it works. My building is a, is a pretty good vision of that. So, I guess I would say, take a moment, trust us, give us a shot, and if we fail you, then you can come back and say, I told you so. One thing that keeps not showing up that should is this is a, this is a revenue generator. We're not asking you to just keep throwing money down a, a hole that doesn't ever get filled. The people pay money there. So, the whole idea is, is that, yeah, we're not going to create a bunch of revenue stream for ourselves, but the whole idea is that we're not going to lose money either while building our tax base, while building our employer, employee and employer base. So, just kind of look at it through a different perspective. That's all I'm asking.
I do want to bring up the fact that I did call a commissioner that's on this committee. I did call Ashley on Friday. Like, I, I had to call twice today to get ahold of Ashley. I did reach out to Mark. They're asking for five thousand dollars, and even though I'm number one A-hole, probably always will be on this commission, doesn't mean that the other commissioners of the city employee shouldn't call me. This committee isn't sanctioned under the city, or they don't think they are, and if there was minutes produced and an Open Meetings Act followed, I would be able to go to the meeting myself. But since they don't think they are under Open Meetings Act and they don't fall underneath the cities, so, I mean, this is way more than me says, say, no. And I've been told explicitly that this is not part of the city, and this is just typical of the city of Buchanan. Oh, yeah, go do it, have a great time, and then here we are. So, I mean, I'm not being nasty about this. There was no information given to me at all. I got a whole list of stuff right here. Your pro temp mayor would not even call me back, Sean. You've been to one meeting, so you didn't know either. I haven't even been fired. So, my vote's no. I don't care. I don't care.
This, this is a private entity?
No, it's not a private thing, Patrick. It's a public thing. It's very public.
They serve the public, but they are their own individual entity.
No, that's, that's... Calla, explain to him, maybe he'll understand you.
So, it's a very gray area at the moment because they, if you do approve the five thousand, that is public funds. I'm not an expert, okay? If they, if you guys decide, then yes, but Ashley has already kept minutes for every meeting. She has the agendas, she has everything because we, at some point, this is a transitional period, we knew that this was going to happen. They are a private 501(c)(3). But because they, there are some gray areas with them accepting city money and Ashley being a city employee. But we are, I have called an expert, and we are going to find out which way they are going to land. But for right now, Ashley has kept everything. She has everything for that sake.
And I'd also say, it's not a...
It's not published, so it's irrelevant.
But it's, it doesn't, right now, that they have not accepted any money, so they are still a private entity.
She's on the payroll.
It doesn't matter.
Taxpayers are paying her.
This is what the commission decided.
Can I, we don't mind putting things out. Our website is live, we're just transitioning the domain from a trans, it's not a problem to put that out.
I am paying you as a taxpayer. I'm sorry, I am paying you as a taxpayer. This is not even a commissioner talking. I am paying you, so I have the right to know what you're spending my money on, and whether you like my company or not, I can sit in a corner and be quiet, but it would have been really nice to got filled in by this, by a commissioner, and telling me the chicken and the egg. It's a chicken and the egg is BS. That's farmer's talk for BS. This is an open meeting, just falls under Open Meetings Act, and I'm going to pursue this very hard. It's not difficult to act, and you're not a 501 yet because you haven't got the money to become a 501 yet. You're pursuing a 501. Exactly.
We, we, we are a 501, so they're...
Do you have a 501?
I got articles of incorporation, we are our...
You're out of order.
We are a 501(c)(3).
Thank you.
The, the one thing I would like to maybe add to my motion is that that five thousand dollars come out of the DDA funds that are, that when we dissolved the DDA, we said we would spend downtown on economic development or projects downtown, and I think this is the perfect fit.
How much is this going to help in grant writing? Does this Main Street program even help in grant writing, Rich? Or would the DDA be better?
You guys have supported Main Street up to this point, they're asking you to trust them.
No, this is the first time I've had to come across.
And to answer your question, they're both important tools, Main Street and the DDA. Right now, we're investing in the DDA, and we have an amazing array of talent and energy that's behind Main Street. We're investing in Main Street, and they're just asking for five thousand dollars, so they can implement a very tangible, evident project of boots on the ground in downtown Buchanan at a time when we really need it. You know, think of it as a pool of tenants that can continue to feed our downtown. We're going to have shop fronts that are vacant. That's what we can draw from this, uh, this, uh, resource, and, you know, I, I think if you did the research as we did, you can look around at thousands of successful examples of accelerated, accelerators and incubators, and I don't think the timing could be better for Buchanan to implement this.
I got one more question.
Yeah.
When is that building even going to open? Maybe this is all irrelevant, and we should wait another year.
Wait, I don't know the answer to that question, but wait for what?
For him to be able to open the building.
But they still, they need, they still need to get marketing materials and things around, and they don't have the cash to do that right now. They need, they need help doing those things.
So, I can say that we've been, obviously, construction is unpredictable, especially now everybody knows that, but we've been told that a launch date of August is reasonable and that we might even be able to have access to the building in June. So, I know that looks, when you go down, it's not finished yet, but they're putting in electric, and I know you guys have been involved in construction before, you know that that's, we're rounding the corner here. So, I'm very hopeful that we'll be able to get it up in the fall, early fall and August, and that would be ideal for me because I, we are also trying to partner with potentially one of our local universities, as you mentioned, so we can have a steady stream of bringing college kids into town to see their business ideas. So, I'm hoping August, but obviously I can't promise that. It's not my building, and they can't promise that because it's unpredictable.
Is Michael Rowland on this committee?
He's not.
Did he just recently resign?
No.
You had a motion, Your Honor?
Well, we're still in the discussion. Calla alluded to the fact that you are talking to somebody, you know, about, uh, the 501(c)
It's really just Open Meetings Act.
Okay, uh, the open meeting. Is this something that we could table till maybe even the next meeting when you got a little bit more information, and then quite possibly Ashley could come back with, with something, you know, a little bit more?
The money doesn't have anything to do with the actual Open Meetings Act. This is just that if they're violating, that they're violating, which they aren't, because they are not really a public entity. It's a very, very gray area, and I wouldn't say yes or no because I'm not a lawyer. So, we don't know, but they have been following what they, like they said, they're going through that transition period. They have their group, they're starting to move forward. This is what the city commission decided that they wanted to pursue was the Main Street program. Now, they're, they're doing that, now that other things are going to fall into place. But Ashley has been keeping up on that when that time has come.
Are we state sanctioned? Has the state sanctioned you yet?
Do we have an EIN, is that what you mean? I mean, yes, we are a 501...
Well, the state has to recognize you as a sanctioned...
Yes, 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 yes.
I've only been, I've only been to one meeting, but I have every faith that we're going to see results very quickly from this group.
And Main Street program's great. They just posted an article this week, four communities in the area received twenty-five thousand dollar grants each, one of them, two of them, one of them is jet from Soldier that moved to Niles. So...
Well, I look at the faces of the people that are on that, and, you know, uh, you know, we have to trust those people and, and their ideas, so I'll be verbal like Dan. I'll go for it.
Good, there you go.
Swam?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Beyanski?
Nope.
Money?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. If you have any further questions, send me an email, and I invite you all to come to our next meeting.
Yes, I'd like for you to put it on the calendar if you would, or except just send me an invite, because I'd like to come and listen. I really would.
Okay, moving on to the finance department with Treasurer Denver Prin.
Okay, I supplied you with the revenue expenditure report today. You can see, we're still, we're still working through not only the chart of accounts changes, but making sure expenditures are categorized correctly, and a big one of those is the Prime New Hope invoices, which Courtney and I are going to start going to re-categorizing them to have them reflect in Campbell Projects more than just the general fund or their city manager and their situation. So, if you have any questions or you see anything out of line, just let me know, except Tim and I are working through it and piggybacking on preparing a new budget, we're in this one in order as well. My tax collection for the twenty-two season is over. I turned over about ninety-eight thousand three ninety-four... Ninety-eight thousand three eighty, three ninety-four in delinquent taxes, so that's about six percent of our tax base is turned over as delinquent. We will be made whole, and probably in two months, the county will make us whole for that, so we will collect the remainder. Going along with working on the budget, not only this year, but next year, I've supplied the department heads with their section of our budget, so have them go through and see if there's any expenses that are there that shouldn't be or need to be re-categorized as well, so they're aware. It's becoming, it's becoming clear that the departments themselves aren't really familiar with their own budgets, so this is a learning experience for everybody. And then we have a finance committee, a finance committee meeting next week, and hopefully I'll have some budget amendments that we can review at that time. If you have any questions, open door.
Anybody have any questions?
Are we doing well, or are we doing fair, or, I mean, nutshell?
As far as, as a whole?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're okay.
So, we don't have both feet in the cement bucket yet?
No.
Well, there's, there's a lot of numbers here, and I'll just call you about them.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Moving down to new business, Consider Approving Resolution 2023-0412, Resolution to appoint Tim Gainas as Director of Public Safety as the Emergency Management Coordinator.
Oh, Harvey's going for it. This is...
Is this just an annual update?
Yes, it's just an annual update. Tim was...
I was going to say, I thought we'd already done this.
We did. We did, we're doing it again. Yeah.
I'll move to approve Resolution 2023-0412, appointing Tim Gainas as emergency management liaison.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Support?
This is money I'll support.
Thank you. A roll call, please.
Denison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Beyanski? Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Carries.
Okay, moving down to communications.
Uh, just an update. There is going to be a public accuracy test of voting equipment held this Friday, the 14th at 11:00 a.m. Um, I will be here testing with one of the city employees. If you would like to come watch, nobody has ever came to watch. Please, it's a public here. It's a public meeting. If you'd like to see me test the equipment to make sure that everything is working well, please come and sit with us. It'll be a good time. So that's at 11 on, um, Friday. If you'd be here. And I do, I did not put this in there, but I wanted to just say, I was able to go to the high school on Thursday and do four senior classes, and we ended up getting 41 seniors, which is a vote. Um, so that was really exciting, and it was a joy to be there and to hear the questions from the kids, but, um, definitely an experience and hopefully a yearly thing for us. So that's all I have.
Good. Thank you. Okay, moving on to public comment on non-agenda items only. Please make your way to the podium, state your name for the minutes.
Don Ryman, 311 West Front Street. The following are my reasons for voting no on the proposed 34.7 school millage on the May 2 Buchanan ballot. When I was growing up, we would get in the mail with Sears Roebuck mail order catalog. It contained all sorts of things we could order through the mail that we didn't really require and didn't have the money to buy, but which were nice things. Some people called the catalog the wish book. The school must be careful not to require the taxpayers by millage votes to pay out of their limited monies for things that it doesn't absolutely require. The test is, is it necessary or is it nice? Individual taxpayers may decide to buy with their money nice but unnecessary things, but they must not vote for school millage proposal required in the other tax status to pay for such things. The school board must have the discipline to rest, to, to resist making such millage request. Just about all requests in the millage proposal fail the nice but not necessar, fall in the nice but not necessary category. Individual taxpayers may donate someone a nice of things to the school. And all schools are going to put down artificial turf on the football field, but the money to do that is likely coming from pri, voluntary private donations. They, the estate of a, of a respected couple in the town has given the money for bleachers at the middle school. Second, Harvey Burnett, the school board president, was quoted in the St. Joseph Harold Palladium with regard to the voting man. Voting down of a nearly identical millage at the November, November 2022 election is saying, another focus of the Buchanan School Board will be how to repair the district's aging infrastructure since the millage didn't pass. The school district is required to maintain the infrastructure up to standard with the money it receives from the state to run the schools. It should never be in a place where it has to borrow money at long-term variable interest rates to do this. It might ask for a millage to expand the infrastructure to receive and encourage some students, but we haven't had that. In this period of heavy inflation and rising gasoline prices, we must all tighten our belts. As to aging infrastructure, Harvard University is still operating out of buildings built in the 18th century. Age is another factor, so long as the infrastructure is maintained. Third, the school has received several million dollars from the federal government for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, HVAC items listed as one of the items covered by the millage. This means that the school will not have to borrow money and pay long-term variable interest on it to achieve these HVAC programs, but the HVAC money has been deducted from a millage. This is dishonest. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Uh, my name's Brian Murphy. I live 1489 East Gleam Buchanan Road in the township. Um, my wife and I moved here three years ago. Um, I'm currently serving on Buchanan Tree Friends. Uh, I'm standing on the shoulders of Richard Murphy because I'm now the chairman of that. Um, I've also been appointed to the Water and Sewer Commission, and I look forward to serving with Commissioner Beyanski and Commissioner Swam on that. I come here as a citizen of the township, recognizing that the strength of this town, this city, is really important to our region, but our township as well. Um, I also want to just appreciate all the vigorous debate that's happening with regard to this. Mayor, you mentioned at the last meeting how it's important that people show up to help you all do your job with the really tough issues that are coming in front of you going forward. So as a person who is recent to this area, I just want to employ the citizenship and the passion that's here for this matter. My career's been in raising money for private education, so I've been in schools my whole career. We call it a case for support when we ask people for money to support private education. My wife is a public school teacher, former administrator. Um, she and I were at the open house the other day. I think the case for support in this community is clear. It is, uh, a disgrace, that building, Moccasin School. We look forward to going to the high school to see that as well. You have incredible teachers, incredible administrators, incredible super, or custodians and engineers and staff that are holding the building together with very little. The teachers are creating a wonderful environment for education right now. It's only, it's unimaginable what they could do with appropriate facilities. Harvard may have started in the 18th century, but they have the largest endowment in the world for education and are able to therefore maintain the buildings. This is a public facility. It does not. I'm not advocating one way or the other. I'm just saying that the case for support for this is clear. Money needs to be spent. If it's spent in, uh, with a millage, my wife and I are all for it. We're encouraging everybody in our, on our lane over there and in the, in the, uh, in our community to do so. So I appreciate all of your work. I know this isn't a topic for you, but I know that, uh, you are interested in people in this community stepping up and helping, and, and I just applaud you for all of that. I applaud the people from the Main Street group that are doing that as well. I think Buchanan's at an, at a flexion point. I really do. And I've heard that there have been flexion points before. I just don't think it, this is the time to miss it. And so thank you for your work and, uh, look forward to the outcome of this referendum.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi again, Randy Hendrickson, Building 324 owner. I live in, uh, the Buchanan Township as well. Uh, just a, a quick, a little bit of gratitude I wanted to give to the city commission and Richard Murphy. Um, we had a really nice email that went out, uh, from Rich today, and, uh, I, I won't recap it, but basically, um, as a result of a lot of, uh, hard work between the city commission, uh, private sector, as well as the preservation society, the Clark, uh, complex was listed as, on the, the register of, uh, national historic places. And I just wanted to thank you guys for all of your work and, uh, due diligence that you put forth into making that happen. Uh, it's a very significant thing for our community, and I know you guys know that as well. So thank you.
Thank you for everything you're doing. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
Harvey's excited. He's running.
Chief Harvey Burnett.
Time's up.
Chief Harvey Burnett, and I'm up here to advocate for, we're doing a presentation in, this Thursday as part of our community-based, um, policing efforts where we're talking about how to cope with loss. So it doesn't just mean loss through death, but any kind of loss. So if you want to come and talk about how do you deal and recover, come on out. Um, it'll be at the Fellowship Hall, at the Buchanan Seventh Evangelist Church on Nows Buchanan Road, and we do have it posted everywhere. So come on. The first 20 people that come will get a free book that was donated, and of course, we have goodies as well there, so.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none. Uh, moving on to executive comments. Any man have any comments?
Just want to thank everyone for coming. I see a lot of caring and concerned citizens here and my coworkers and my colleagues on the commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Money?
You always. Well, first off, uh, I want to wish Mike Baker a happy birthday. Today's his birthday, and what's he doing? He's down here representing the city at the city commission meeting. So happy birthday, Mike. Also, congratulations to Randy, uh, on building 324. That's an impressive move, and, uh, you guys have just done a great job down there. I personally have, you know, some contact with that, with that building. So, uh, yeah, you're doing a great job down there. Congratulations to Tim on his, uh, new little assignment. I'm sure that will be going well. Um, I want to thank this, this staff and, uh, Mr. Lynch for everything that they've been doing to take care of the business of the city. I know I, I come down here and I talk to Kala and, uh, and I know that they've been working really hard, uh, to clear up a lot of matters, and, uh, Mr. Lynch, you've just been a, a, a great asset to the city. Um, I hope that.
And we're looking forward to the next three years.
We can continue to see your smiling face here, yeah. Uh, and once again, I always give accolades to this commission because what we do, uh, sitting up here is a, a rather hard job. Doesn't always have a lot of gratitude to it, but, uh, thank you to my colleagues that helped me get through this, and I appreciate it. And like I said, and especially to the staff, and, uh, please relay that to the other people. That's all I have.
Mr. Beyanski?
Well, I was going to offer to streak if Tim would stay, but I don't know if.
Do you want him to stay?
I really, you know, the thing about it is, is I'm not really a curmudgeon. I do like to be informed. I do like to be invited to these meetings, and I do like controversy. I love controversy, and I like people asking questions. I mean, the whole vendetta, I'm not against the education, not in any way, shape, or form, but I've seen a lot of debacles, a lot of debacles, and I really want to see the money that we do raise and put in the schools go for academia because we really need to graduate people that can fill out job applications. And as far as the Main Street, I've reached out several times to several different people, and there's always been a question, and I've been questioning the Roberts rules right from the get-go. And you were created because people in this city could not get along with people on the DDA. And, you know, that's a bug in my craw. That's probably not going to go away, and, but we need to go forward. I do know we need to go forward, and I don't really care for, um, any form of welfare, whether it be commercial or private, you know? There's always need for disabilities, but if you're capable of working, get out and work, and I just want to see more of that. I've heard nothing but good things about your committee, you know? But I really would like to see you, Barb needs so much vital help. They, you know, the committees need a lot of help, and there's a lot of things that we could do with the committees that we've already got formed that we wouldn't necessarily have to pay somebody outside $50,000 or $60,000 if we had the volunteers sitting around brainstorming and doing it, rather than coming up with more things for us to do as taxpayers. We can't afford what we're doing now. And thank you to all of you. And Tim, I really do want you to stick around.
Yeah, so happy birthday, Mike. I was on top of my list too. So, uh, big congratulations, Randy. I won't be to keep beating on that drum here, but, uh, a lot of effort went into that. It was a great email to receive today and something for us all to celebrate. So excited for everything you already have going on and what'll come in the future there as well. Huge thank you to the Leos. The Easter egg hunt was a massive success this weekend, so if you didn't have the chance to, that's the, that's the fastest three minutes in, in Buchanan. I tell you what, thousands of eggs. My kids had a blast. I thank the fire department for letting the, all the kids climb up in the truck, check out all that fun stuff out. It's a great community event. We're so lucky, uh, to have that opportunity here. I want to give a, a massive vote of confidence in the Main Street program. So I get regular updates, um, that I seek out with people I've built the relationships on with on that board over a number of years, and, uh, very confident in the individuals that are serving on their board, the passion they have for this community, and, um, their ability to steer it in the right direction for what's best for Buchanan. So keep working hard. We appreciate what you're doing. I, I think our $5,000 investment today is going to be repaid tenfold, so. Last couple of things. I know we keep sticking around, telling Tim we want him to stick around here, so. But, uh, as a side update, uh, the commission is reviewing our, uh, resumes for candidates next week. Uh, it'll be a closed session meeting, so, um, for privacy reasons, but once the candidate pool is selected, we'll be doing in-person interviews for the public. So excited to review that. We had 39 applicants that were interested in the city of Buchanan as their next home. Uh, so that's something to be proud of. And, and lastly, uh, some of you might have saw Mark and I Saturday morning. It's been our ritual daily to, to walk 20, 25% of this town to get our eyes on the ground and what's going on. So we get a little later start on the weekend, but please, if you see us out there, stop us, say hi to us, wave at us, honk at us. Um, we're, we're getting a little bit of a following now, it looks like.
I think we, I think we've covered the entire city now, multiple times.
Multiple, every, every area. So we're still working through it, but it's, it's been a good time.
Don't take your dog.
Yeah, you're going to be at the darn dog. So, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think first and foremost, you know, everybody has their opinion about the school bond and, and whether you vote no or yes, right? That's your own prerogative, and, and I respect either one. You know, you've come to the conclusion, uh, whatever it may be, and you have your own personal opinions, and, and as I say to my wife, that's for you, you know, and you, you're welcome to that, and I have to respect that. I will say this, that during a time, uh, that if you were around Buchanan and we had a cinder track, if you've ever walked on that track, ran on that track, walked across that track, or been anywhere near that track, or Brandywine's, uh, wonderful cinder track back in the day, uh, as much as people may not think sports move things forward, they, uh, they sure give opportunities for our children to do great things at all various schools, be it D1, D2, uh, community college and what have you, right? And I speak from a personal experience is that when they put, put $10 million into that facility, and I went from running on a cinder track, and then I was in, able to win a state title with some wonderful individuals from the north community, it's something I will never forget. I have records at that school with the people from that north side community. We have the great opportunity to win a state title again if given an opportunity to update, update our facilities. We won it in 1999 in the track and field. I realize that's always not on the forefront of everybody's mind, but when we do updates such as this, it gives us renewed vigor to be successful. And once again, however you choose to vote, just remember that you're affecting the lives of every child in this community that currently goes to school here and grandchildren and great-grandchildren, all right, and the teachers' lives, the administrators' lives. Uh, that being said, um, Main Street Board, I, I could go on and on. It's probably some of the most amazing entrepreneurial minds I've ever been grateful to be around. Uh, it's not always positive. We don't always agree, but what we do have is casual discourse. And we come to a conclusion, it's always best for the community, and that's something that's dearly missing in most boards, and that's why when that board was put together, there was an extensive amount of work put into the people that were put on it, the people that were put around it, so that we could progress forward, and that's what we're doing today. So thank you so much for bringing your presence to this meeting. I really do appreciate it. And Tim, just going to say what everybody else said. Thank you so much.
Hey, I forgot one thing. Uh, minor, not minor, major event coming up this week on Thursday. The Buchanan Chili Walk is, uh, downtown, 5 to 7 o'clock, so bring your friends, family. It's going to be a great event. The weather looks fantastic, so knock on wood. We usually. The weather looks fantastic, so knock on wood, we usually have rain. So please come down. It'll be live music, obviously plenty of food to eat and a great time. Sorry to cut in front of you.
I speak last, so there's nothing to say, but. I made you a cake, Mike, but I forgot it. I did want to, Brian, the, the tree friends are looking for volunteers for the 22nd, correct?
Yes.
Where are you going to meet or where should they show up?
They should sign up on our Facebook page. There's a form that Elaine has put together. We are meeting in Victory Park at 9:00.
9:00 on Saturday the 22nd?
Saturday, yep.
Perfect, thank you.
It is also plow day.
Oh, it's plow day, same weekend.
And, and we have a chili station at the Rody Rody Art Center.
All right.
Hot?
Support our chili.
Is it hot chili? Is it white chili? Is it?
It's venison chili.
Worth a walk up the hill. I, I wanted to echo the thoughts of Commissioner Money. I, I know the staff has been digging out and I know our accounting folks have been working hard and I appreciate your efforts, I really do. And I know that Tim has been very helpful. I keep hearing how helpful Tim is and I don't want to say it, Tim, because I know your wife wants you retired, but nobody sitting up here would be disappointed if you decided to stick around for a while. There will be no streaking.
No streak. That won't streak.
I think that's all I have, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
Come back, send motion.
Money I'll support.
Whedon?
Yep.
Bionski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes. Thank you everyone for coming.
I still have cinders.
I was gonna say Jimmy probably does too.